Hey, good evening, welcome everyone. It is 6:30 PM here at November 18th. And I hereby call the Howell Township Planning Commission, meeting to order. We have a roll call.
Williams.
Present.
Spalding.
Present.
Newstead.
Here.
Bowle.
Present.
Stanley.
Here.
Loleo.
Okay, all in attendance. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
At Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our banner, in the rhythm with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Commissioners, I take everyone has reviewed our agenda. Do we have any suggested edits, updates, corrections? Or we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion for Mr. Spalding, is that you Tim?
Yes.
Second for Mr. Bowle, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, the minutes from our last meeting. Same story, different topic, any suggested edits, corrections, changes? If not, we have a motion to approve.
I'll approve.
Motion for Mr. Stanley, support from Mr. Spalding, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next up, we have our call to the public. I ask that you step up to the microphones, state your name and address, that's so your comments are accurately recorded. And if you're here to speak about the rezoning, we do have a public hearing scheduled later on in the agenda specifically on that topic. So I ask that you hold your comments for that, for that part of the agenda. And we ask you to try to keep your comments brief, three minutes is our window. And that said, call to the public is open.
Hi, my name is Lauren Pribenda, 930 Gully Road. I am speaking on behalf of more than 400 Howell Township residents who signed a petition for a data center moratorium, as well as over 2,000 Livingston County residents. And I would like to, on their behalf, request today that the Planning Commission please put forth a formal recommendation to the Township Board for them to pass the data center moratorium at the time of their November 20th Township Board meeting. Thank you.
Chris Dennisen, 7196 Madder Lane. Wanted to say basically the same thing Lauren just said. On the committee that was just created, I think we talked about it last month, you guys all seem pretty excited about it. And we really would like the opportunity to serve our purpose, but to do that, we really do need the moratorium. So we're really hopeful that you guys can support that formal recommendation to the Board to pass the moratorium. Thank you.
I'm Mary Mado, 780 Henderson, Howell Township. I implore you to push for a moratorium. We need transparency, we need protections, and we need to respect the word of the public. And the public is here in support of taking a breath and finding out what this is all about before you make some changes that are on a magnitude that no one can reverse them. It changes our community, it changes the people that live in it. And I hope that you will push for a moratorium on the 20th, thank you.
Good evening, Board, my name is Charles Smith. I live at 5136 Fleming Road. About 2,500 feet from the proposed data center. I just want to say that Michigan has a limited amount of farmlands, farmlands, wetlands, grasslands, pastures, forests, rivers, lakes, and streams for all of us to enjoy. That's why our state advertising agency is bragging about calling it pure Michigan. We say that so that all of our Midwestern neighbors will come and visit us and see all the awesome places that some of our citizens seem to take for granted. If they let the billionaires and their huge corporations keep buying up all the natural resources for their billionaire shareholders, then Michigan will soon be called the data center dead zone. I'm here to call for a moratorium, no data centers. Thank you.
My name is Mary Ann Barker, I live at 8849 Antcliff. And I would just like to say that everyone, when we, when we give a pledge allegiance to the flag, we say it is for everyone. And not just three families that dictate what this county is going to do. And I think that you should really, you know, give this moratorium a lot of, a lot of praise. Thank you.
Mark Bannister out on 2330 Tully Road. This is, I mean, I'm against the data center, but that's beside the point. The thing you're going to talk about today, about the rezoning on Tully Road. That side of the road is basically all residential except for La Casa, that's right inside there. And so, in my opinion, the airport is the industrial side. And then the other side of the road is pretty much separate from La Casa, which I didn't oppose that because I know La Casa, I've done a lot of things with La Casa, volunteered for them, I think it's a good organization. The only thing I didn't like is the light exposure that they generate. So I don't know what's going to go in, what the people are looking at doing on Tully Road. And then hopefully find out, why I'm planning to find out what they're actually wanting to do on that one. Thank you very much.
I got a question. You asked us not to speak about the rezoning, is, would that, because I want to talk about that whole Tully Road rezoning too. Is this the time or not?
No, we have a scheduled public hearing specifically for that later on in the agenda. The call to the public is pretty much an open mic. With, with the reason.
Hello, my name is Green, I live at 210 Penasko. And I just wanted to come here to sincerely thank you all because it's been very clear to me that this Planning Commission takes this job very seriously. And I want you to know that we appreciate it. As you review rezonings, I just want to encourage you to continue to do what you've been doing, practicing responsible, thoughtful zoning. In Michigan and in Howell Township, you make it clear that your role is to protect the public health, safety, welfare, the natural resources, and the character of this community. And right now, with the Township exploring all of these things, committees, ordinances, and even a moratorium, it's especially important to move carefully. So I'm just here to encourage you and tell you how much we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other, any other takers?
Welcome to the Board, my name is Michael Markley. I represent the Handy Township side of what's going on. My home would be roughly less than half a mile from the proposed site. Of course, you guys have nothing to do with what Handy Township does with that parcel. But they're not going to get their parcel in Handy if they don't get it first in Howell because it's the majority side of it. I just wanted to tell all of you guys that served my country for nine years, I got blown up. And my wife and I respected our first child, we moved out here for our little slice of heaven. And I don't want it ruined. Thank you.
Okay, well, if there are no other takers, we'll close the call to the public. And our next agenda item is the Zoning Board of Appeals Report. And we had no meeting last month, so there is no report to discuss. Next up is our Township Board Report. Looks like the meeting was rescheduled till Thursday, so.
Makes that one easy.
Right, 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 that's quick and fast. The Ordinance Violation Report. Anything of note or important, any changes, I should say, anything of, no worries?
There's, there's changes, there's updates, but they're all on there.
I did review it, but nothing really jumped off the page of me as being on fire.
It's much smaller. We're getting there.
Concise.
All right.
Yeah.
I had a couple of questions on it.
Of course.
Jonathan, on the 4141 West Grand River. I have followed through the pri, the whole process on this. It seems like the owner is wondering if they're just going to tear down the house and just leave the barn there. What's the appeal process if they're challenging not being able to, or being able to leave the barn up and take the house down? What process is that?
So we issued a determination letter to tell them that they couldn't because it's against the ordinance. So they have a choice, they can challenge that determination and go to the ZBA. And then the ZBA will decide whether it violates the ordinance or not. Or they can tear the barn down when they tear, tear the house down. So they're, they're contemplating what they're going to do, they just haven't decided yet.
Is, was there a reason why they wanted just to keep the barn? I, I drove by there, it doesn't seem like there's anything really special about that barn. Half the siding on the bottom is down.
They don't know what they want to do with the property. They thought it would be useful to store some materials in until they decided what they were going to do. So I, I think it was more of a, I don't know if it was a necessity, but it was just something that they were thinking would be a good idea for whatever it is they're going to do moving forward.
Okay, and then with, just where Justice Pence is, are they, it looked, it said it was going to be on the agenda last month, and then it looks like some changes, but is that moving along?
So I think it was yesterday that the applicant resubmitted with changes, trying to incorporate the changes requested by the planner and the township engineer.
Okay.
So it's, it's back to those two entities to re-review to make sure that the updates incorporate what they had asked.
And would we see that maybe in December?
I, I hope, I mean, if they, since the engine, our engineer and our planner have already seen it once, it should be a much faster review, so I would expect it to be on the December Planning Commission agenda.
Okay, thanks. Very good.
Okay, our next agenda item is our scheduled public hearing, A and B, for rezoning two vacant parcels, well, a vacant parcel and a parcel with a house on Barn and other outbuildings on it on Tully Road. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Newstead.
Support Bowle.
The support from Mr. Bowle. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have the applicant here? Sir, why don't you step up and tell us your, your reasoning for the rezoning request?
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for your time, my name is Bill McCrory. I live at 1015 East Spain Street in Brighton. My office is located at 123 Mason Road in Howells. I have filed the applications for the rezoning on the two pieces of property. The first piece of property that I'm talking about is located at the corner of Tully and Popple Lake. It's basically a square 7.03 acre piece of property. It is presently vacant. It is master planned for the flex industrial that I'm asking for. The next piece of property is located right next to that. It's not square, it's more of a rectangular piece, that's, I believe, just a little over, right about 10 acre piece of property right there. That is zoned for the agricultural residential. And I'm asking that that go to a flex industrial also. I want to start out by telling all of you that I know that as part of these things, I can agree the conditions on the rezoning. And what I will start off by telling you is, as a, as a condition of rezoning, I will agree, I would agree, that this would never be a data center. I have no. I promise, I'm not interested in a data center, I have nothing to do with a data center. The other thing that I agree to and would agree to is no solar panels. I'm not interested in doing solar panels, that's not what I'm interested in at all. I have looked at the property, and I'll start first with the seven acre, or square piece of property there. That's the one that is zoned as regional service commercial. When I look at the definition under ordinances of that zoning, it appears that it anticipates things like retail, big box, retail, something that would be kind of an intensive use, an intensive traffic type of use. And that's not what I'm interested in doing. What I'm interested in doing is something that would be more along the lines of a ancillary uses for the airport type supplement, the airport type of thing. I can also tell you that when I purchased, I own outright the seven acre parcel, this is squared for the Popple and Tully. I hired someone and they did an evaluation, and they evaluated it for mini storage. That's something that's permitted use with the zoning on the seven acres. And the results of my study indicated that that market is basically saturated at this point. It's kind of like car washes in Livingston County. Car washes and mini storage, so. And this, that's not what I'm contemplating for that type of use. I, I, when I move over to the 10 acre piece of property, you've got a house there. I've been through the house a number of times, I've actually been looking at that piece of property for a considerable period of time. I looked at it two or three years ago, actually when I bought the seven acre piece of property, I found out who owned it, I went and met with them. I've been through the house a couple of times, I don't know if the house can be saved, I don't know if the house can be preserved. But my intention would be that if I could, that hopefully I would preserve the house as part of it. When you go out, as you head to the, be to the east on the piece of property, you've got a barn, I don't know if anyone walked back there, there's a barn back there that's in pretty bad shape. My intention would be obviously to take that barn, eliminate that barn. There's also another, I don't know what I want to call it, but kind of a, maybe a word? No, I'll get to the stone ones. But there's another wooden structure that appears that it's not particularly sound. That would be something, you know, I don't want to refer to it as blight or something, but it appears to me that those don't have a real functional value at this point. I looked at the stone pieces, there are the stone structures that are there, and they're kind of unique, okay? It really kind of offers, you've got pillars that are out in the front, the stone pillars that are out there. That's, I think, an attractive thing. I thought that the front porch on the house, being a stone front porch, that's an attractive thing. And when you go over and look at the stone structures there, if you actually look at them, there might be a little foundation problem, the roofs are gone, obviously, there's that. But I was hoping that at some point with the use that I might be able to incorporate those because it would, you know, I think it would give a kind of a nice use. So what I'm looking for doing, or what I would like to do, would be something that would be a less intense, a less impactful use than what the commercial zoning is presently. I would be looking to do something that would have a lower traffic volume in that area. I also recognize that as part of the process, if you grant me the rezoning, then what that does is that then takes me into coming up with a, a site plan and the use. And I understand as part of that site plan and the use, that we would be looking at buffering, we would be looking at water retention, we would be looking at things like that, light. I heard a gentleman stood up and talked about how the light pollution was on. So what I'm looking to do is, I think that, first of all, both pieces of property, I know I've talked about the seven acre parcel is master planned for the flex industrial. The 10 acre parcel is also part of your master plan for flex industrial. And I think that when you look at the definition of flex industrial, it anticipates that the uses that you would have would be more incorporated into the uses that are around the property. I recognize to the north, and I recognize somewhat to the east, there's some residential property there. But I think that with the 17 acres that I have, I think that we could come up with buffering, and we could come up with light pollution, and in particular, setback type of things that could address all of those types of issues. So that's what I'm anticipating for the property. I think that although I'm asking for a flex industrial zoning, I think that the uses, I know that the uses that I would be anticipating for the property and would need site plan would be a less intensive use than the commercial. Because if you look at what's permitted under the commercial right now, I think you could basically build a target store there if you wanted. And I don't think that that's where a target store belongs. I mean, if you look at it practically, all right, under the zoning, present zoning for the seven acres, it anticipates that commercial, retail, that type of thing. Well, the fact of the matter is, is right across the street, you've got an airport, all right? And you're also not on a main road. And successful commercial, successful retail, that's not the location. So I would be looking to anticipate building something that would fit in more with what the, not only the topography, but the other uses that are in that area. So that's my presentation, I'm open to any questions that anyone has. And I, I went through, I know that your planners did some recommendations, I read all of those, I concur that, I believe that I've got the criteria up, with the planners, up your planners' head in their reports. So I'm open to questions.
Thank you, sir.
No, just a comment. I appreciate your presentation because I was struggling a little bit because you weren't definite on what you were planning on doing with the property.
Right.
And there are, there are homes there.
Right.
And that was a big concern to me when I went into the area, but you know, the contractor building scared me a little bit. And industrial, the term industrial always scares me a little bit. But I do appreciate your point about service oriented uses would mean a lot of traffic. And you're right, they could put a huge store up there with a lot of traffic on the road, so. Kudos, nice presentation, because I was a little nervous.
I also looked at, and talked with John Cooney, thank you for his, his help in this. I also, when, when the people came in and were anticipating the subdivision on Bowen Road, I read what the concerns were, the systems at that point, and the concerns that they had with the traffic. And I think that those are legitimate concerns, and those are things that, and only would take that into account in a site plan. Those are the things that you have, but when I come before you, I want to tell you I've already contemplated those things and anticipated those things. I mean, this is a significant financial investment for me. I mean, this is not something, I want to tell you, this is not something where I'm planning on putting together a deal and then marketing a deal. This is something that I'm anticipating, and what I didn't tell you is, is that, you know, I've been, the other gentleman talked about serving his country. I'm in DuBrighton in 1958, I've been in this county for a long time. I gave you my home address for a reason, I gave you my office address for a reason. And that is, I grew up in this community, I have my own business in this community, my family lives in this community. My daughter lives on Warner Road, she lives in Howell Township. My two grandchildren live by Warner, on Warner Road in Howell Township. I want to build something on these pieces of property that my family.
This isn't a question and answer with the applicant, he's presenting his case to the Board.
Okay, well then how do, how do, how do we as homeowners get that question answered? Like, what is he proposing on this, on these two pieces of property? You guys talk about putting up a target, which, come on, this is a residential road. We've lived there for 30 years, so you want to bring somebody in? I don't know, sir, your journey or what you are, but I want to know whether, what are you guys proposing to do on that land?
He's currently not proposing anything, he's seeking to get zoning so he can then submit a site plan, which would disclose what he's doing.
Correct, but he's.
But that site plan is prone to approval, conditional approval, or rejection. If he comes in with plans for a target, that wouldn't be approved.
Right, but all we, I think all we all want to know is, what is, what is your goal? What's your ultimate goal? You want to rezone, so in your mind, you have to have some reason why and what you want to do with that property.
Anyone else on the Board?
I, I did want to ask you. You, a couple of just things that I, I took from your presentation. This isn't a conditional rezoning, so you haven't, you haven't put any conditions on the property other than what you're saying right here.
Right.
So, and conditional rezoning comes from the applicant. We, we cannot, anybody in the Township cannot tell an applicant what they are proposing. We've seen it with the data center.
Right.
That, on that. So just, so that everyone's clear, you're, this isn't a conditional. The conditions that you're saying are, are not enforceable or, or anything. You're just telling us what you want to do right now, and I understand that. If you had been more intentional, you could, you could have had this as a conditional rezoning with limiting some of the other uses that people may or may not be concerned about.
Mrs. Spalding, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yeah.
I can amend my petition if you would allow me to at this time. I would amend my petition for the rezoning to add the condition that I would not do a data center.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be zoned properly now or with, with this, with the thing. And, and unless you're developing the site, I don't know what you're going to do with it. People tell us things all the time, and it doesn't come to fruition for many, many reasons, and that's perfectly fine. But if, unless you're like, going to develop it, but our, and it's perfectly within your rights to, to walk out of here and sell it tomorrow, or, or develop it yourself. So when we make a recommendation for rezoning, and it's in the packet, if you saw it, any uses that are allowed, or any special uses that are allowed, you could do that there. And I know that you know that from your experience in that. The, I will say that this is master zoned for industrial flex zoning. It's, it's been that way for a long time. And I think that our job is to enforce our zoning and the, and the future zoning. And there's always circumstances that come up with, with not doing one or the other, but I did want to mention that too.
Thank you. And the caveat is, as your Chairperson already pointed out to all of us, anything that I would ever anticipate doing is going to be subject to site plan.
Yeah, just so everyone knows, anything that comes in front of us has a preliminary site plan and then a, a final site plan. So whatever property gets, use gets proposed, is going to have scrutiny to the best of our abilities with our ordinances. So, thank you.
Thank you.
But then couldn't that be sold in two years, and now it's industrial and a target could go up then?
Yeah, we're rez, we're rezoning the property or not, so it's.
But it's still, any kind of site plan would still come back to us.
That's right. Whoever owned the property would have to come back before you would propose site plan.
What is, homeowners, do they still have a say?
At the call to the public, yes, you have your say.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairperson, I think, I don't want to speak for the lady Newbs over here. I think that her question was, is if someone else came back in with it, that owned it other than myself and wanted to do something, would the homeowners still have something to say at the site plan? I, I don't want to speak for you, but.
No, all, all of our meetings have a call to the public at the beginning and the end. That's, that's what they're there for, is for public input on our agenda topics.
All right, anyone else have any questions for?
Something further, Brady, could you take us through your planner's report?
Yeah.
Good, sir, thank you.
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So as the applicant stated, they're looking to rezone the seven acre site at Tully and Popple from regional service commercial to industrial flex zone. Looking at figure two on page four of the report. The site is regional service commercial with agriculture residential to the south and east. commercial with agriculture residential to the south and east, single family residential to the north, and then air research and technology to the west. The future land use map in the master plan has the site categorized as industrial flex along with the parcels to the south, where the parcels to the north are residential, parcels to the east are residential low density, and the airport to the west.
Don't forget, next to the airport is an EMS building.
So, the applicant did not state what they plan to do with the site when it's rezoned, but there's a lot of permitted uses and special land uses that would need approval. So, findings for rezoning, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the policies and uses in the master plan, and the site is categorized as industrial flex in the future land use maps as long, along with the parcels to the south. The rezoning would be compatible with the Livingston County Airport to the west, and And then, um, public services and facilities, no concerns there. The area is planned for, to have the infrastructure that would support the uses in industrial flex zoning, and, um, the proposed rezoning would be better suited for the area because it aligns with the uses proposed in the master plan. The site is currently vacant, and with the rezoning to the site, to the south, there are parcels along Tulie Road that have industrial uses with the Livingston County Airport across the street. Moving on to twenty fifty Tulie Road, the nine point nine acre site to be rezoned from agriculture residential to industrial flex zone. Looking at the zoning, the current zoning is agriculture residential with the parcel to the south, regional service commercial, the north, regional service commercial, the east, agriculture residential, and the west, research and technology. And moving on to the future land use map, it's categorized for industrial flex along with the parcels to the south and north, low density residential to the east and airport to the west. So, um, again, the rezoning is consistent with the policies of the master plan, with the site being categorized as industrial flex. The rezoning would be compatible with the Livingston County Airport to the west. No concerns about services and utilities. The proposed rezoning would be better suited because it aligns with the policies and uses of the master plan. Currently, there's a vacant house with a few outbuildings, and with the airport to the west and the Livingston County EMS building to the south, it could be a more suitable use rather than agricultural residential. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have one, sir, possibly two. The, the permitted uses of an industrial flex zone are varied. There's all, all kinds of options that fit within an IFC. Are there any restrictions to what can be put in an IFC based on residential bordering the zone? Cause it would seem unusual to allow even small scale factories in, literally in someone's backyard.
Um, that is a great question. I do not know. Um, it just states the permitted uses or the special uses. It doesn't have anything on what if it's next to this use.
Right, and I think it would apply if there was a school or a daycare or retirement home or, other non-industrial commercial purposes there.
There would be screening requirements.
Of course.
Yeah.
Screening and lighting restrictions and setbacks.
Yeah.
Water retention. I think that's the only one that I had.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, just for clarification, Brady. So, one of these parcels is currently zoned RSC, regional services commercial.
Yes.
And I just want to clarify this for everybody, so it's not being changed. I mean, it is being changed, but regional services commercial allows for a lot of intensive type uses besides agriculture. The other parcel is currently zoned agricultural, but the future land use plan for both of these parcels, list them on our master plan, is IFC.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Also, I don't know what the, great, great time to mention this, but I'm going to have to abstain from voting on this. I think I have a conflict of interest with the applicant. We're on opposite sides of some litigation at this moment, and I wouldn't like that appearance, so.
I'll take your place.
I think all of us will.
Is this our time to speak?
Um, almost, sir. I, on that, Tim, I also have to accuse myself, this property is literally across the street from my house, and I like to see it remain an open field, so I've got an obvious bias. Okay, if there's no further questions for our planner, let's bring the call to the public. Same rules as before, keep your comments civil within about three minutes, and name an address for the record.
My name is Matt Hall. I live on two oh seven Tulie, directly right across the street. And so, when you talk about to the west of the property, it's just airport and property, it's two houses that live there, I'm one of them. Mr. McQuary spun a lot of words, but to answer a lot of questions. And there's a few things I have problems with, is that the, the master plan is there for a reason, but also you've got to come back and revisit it and revise it to what the public wants. I don't think that anybody wants industrial there, and it's okay to revise it, is it not? I don't know. If we do go ahead with this plan, I have lots of concerns. One of it would be the stormwater. I mean, right now, it's a field, but you put blacktop on there, where's all that water going to go? You know, it's going to come down to our little land property right across the street. Once you give approval, I mean, it does make this property for industrial flex, there's no stopping besides your site plan review, right? He's open to do whatever he wants, that's where you're just spinning the words and not really giving us any definite answers what he wants to do with it, you know? Basically, you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube, you know? I'm against a, there's several reasons why, and I hope that other people join me and say, give them a opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Ray Noble. I've lived there for thirty-six years. I remember specifically talking about the seven acres when it was actually a cattle grazing area, a farm, or it was ten acres. My concern is this, when it was AR with the ten acres, there was a rezoning, and I did go to the Livingston County Drain Commission, and they specifically told me whenever there's a rezoning that the water retention needed to be looked at, and apparently, I'm going to say that has never happened from AR to what is currently zoned. Our street is being delonged, whatever the word is, there's a canal of water, and in twenty twenty-two, we had one hole in our street that took twenty cubic yards. It would have swallowed two pickup trucks, three to four click eat. So, I don't understand what happened then, but any new planning does have to take care or take care of the water now because we are losing gravel and our, our street, that's happened twice in my lifetime on that street. So, I know what a twenty cubic hole looks like, it would take away a pickup truck and something else behind it. So, I don't know why that didn't get addressed. So, if he does get this rezoned, and again, no shovel or no work happens, are we stuck with the same thing, even though it needs to be addressed by the Drain Commission, but no activity happens? Do we still just live downstream and our house gets, our street gets eroded away? That's, that's what's happening now, and I have my president and other people that live on that street. I've lived there for thirty-six years. The other thing is, I know it should get rezoned, I'm not happy with what the land is now because of what's happening with our road, but if anything does happen, I don't think any use of Popple Lane, there should be no driveway on Popple Lane unless he puts in a class A road, because any driveway off of Popple Lane is going to destroy our road. Everybody knows now with the Amazon, everybody, our road is getting ten times the use even though there's only sixteen residents. So, with the way the world is now, our road is getting destroyed from that. So, if it does get rezoned, it needs to be addressed that any use, the whole length of that, width of that lot should be class A road if any needs, if anything like that gets done, and I would.
Thirty seconds.
Wanting or commanding a screen of Evergreen, Perm on all the residential property on all that. Now, the farmland, the way I understand it right now is, without any rezoning, somebody could put seventy foot, ten thousand square foot lots on there because the water and sewers there, and if you destroy that house, you still could put up seventy foot, ten thousand square foot homes on it. That was my, was I told, so, if that's true or not, I'd rather see the, you know, the farmhouse rezoned also, with the situation discretion discretion.
If you're concerned with, with water runoff in a subdivision, we, we review many housing development plans here, and they all have retention and green space.
Yeah, but that didn't happen on the first rezoning because there's no activity or digging or.
It would be on the site plan, that would be required.
So, what I'm saying is, when this gets rezoned and everything fails, the proponent passes away and a new owner owns the land, does that mean nothing will happen? That's what I want to point out.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Debbie Manisto, and I'm at two three three zero Tulie. I'm sorry that I got a little passionate, but.
Alright, who's that?
We have also lived on Tulie Road for thirty years and has really seen the total transition of a residential road that was dirt at one time. You know, we had to put up with the airport and had to put up with all that intras- infrastructure. Then you have the EMS building that came, okay. Then we had to do the Big La Casa building, which is a great resource for the community, but the way I look at it is, we are still residential. You have a lot of residential houses on Tulie Road. And Mr. McQuary, I just wish you would be a little bit more transparent as a homeowner, that we have also lived in, I've lived in Heartland since nineteen seventy-two, so I've been here a long time, so it would just be really nice to know, what are your thoughts? What do you propose to do? Is it something that's going to be horrific looking or whatever? You've got to have, when somebody buys a piece of land, you have to have something in your mind of what you're going to do with it, correct? You're just not going to buy it to buy it and go, well, what do you think I'm going to do with it? So, that's what I'm looking for, going even going to the data center, there's no transparency. We have to just put our faith into people of hoping that they're going to take us in our lifestyle, not for granted. So, I just really would hope that you would be a little bit more transparent in giving us an idea of what do you plan on doing with that property? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ted Kemper. I'm from Popple Lane, twenty-six thirty-four. Just to start, we moved into that area for specific reasons, by a beautiful lots of deer, wildlife, space away from the hectic life that many of us live. But there's one thing I, I want to bring to the attention to everybody here. Is there anybody else here from La Casa? And they built that building there, I'm just going to assume for the peace and quiet that it offers, the beautiful area that it has, the trees all around, to almost give a, an atmosphere of protection for these women. And I think it would be a complete shame that something were to go in and disturb that peace and tranquility that these victims of abuse would be affected by. We cannot describe what these women go through. I've seen it, I've interviewed people, and it's heartbreaking to know that this takes place. So, I pray that it does not change the zone, that this board, this county, this city, whatever it is, protects that building and doesn't permit anybody to build anything that will disturb that, that section of our community.
Thirty seconds.
That community needs to be protected. So, if, I noticed that the nine point nine acres is pending, and I, I hope he's not able to purchase it because we have upheld that sanctuary for those, those ladies. And I won't go into details on all the other stuff that I know about with, with my previous jobs, but it is absolutely, absolutely imperative that we protect that location from any kind of growth or any kind of building. Leave it agriculture, let the fields grow, let the trees grow, and keep it the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well said.
All in favor?
Ten open, four four zero eight Ellis Road. To go off of what he was saying, I was wearing Corvette, alright, two years. I moved out here because I had PTSD, I liked the peace, I liked the quiet, it helps. If you turn into what he wants it to be, you're going to open the door for the data center and anything else that wants to move in. They're going to try to build in, and everybody here doesn't want it. So, I'm just requesting that you think about it hard because I don't want to move again. I like the peace, I like the quiet. Nobody needs to deal with construction twenty-four seven through sixty-five, and with all of this, you'll have people coming in from other cities, crime rate will go up. Just think about it.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Paul Johnson. I live at two seven five zero Popple Lane. I've been living there for twenty-four years with my family. It's been a very peaceful area. I oppose the rezoning of the vacant lot to industrial flex zone for the following reasons. Firstly, the applicant can submit a site plan for any permitted use, even if it differs from the stated intent. Now, this can open the door for uses like a warehouse or manufacturing plant that would not align with the adjacent lots in the neighborhood that is residential. Two, rezoning introduces industrial risk and is also incompatible with nearby. that would not align with the adjacent lots in the neighborhood that is residential. Two, rezoning introduces industrial risk and is also incompatible with nearby arms. And it could also lower the property values on Papa Lane. A rezoning would likely increase traffic and bring heavy trucks and increase wear and tear on Tulley and Papa Lane, and pose public safety risks to pedestrians. Currently, there's a public school, bus stop at the end of Papa Lane on Tulley. So an increased traffic there could pose a risk to those students. Permitting an industrial could also bring environmental damage, water pollution, drain problems, air pollution, unwanted noise, and also light pollution. And the current zoning is probably better than going to industrial, which supports growth while preserving the community character. Those are my main points, thank you.
Well said, thank you, sir.
Harris Wetzold, three nine zero Tana Drive. I don't live by this site, but I just, I live in Livingston County, I just moved back here a couple of years ago. And I think Livingston County, it's like this big assault on us. We're getting hit with this, a data plant, solar farms, all this stuff is just, it's just too much. Our country, our little town here is just disappearing. If we give them this much space, they want this much space. And it's, you know, how many solar fields and hot farms and how many data factories? And it's just opening the door, and it just seems like Livingston County is just getting slammed right now.
Hi, I'm Maureen Hykenen, I live at three three five six Nealon Circle. I live in Jonathan's Landing, and you all are familiar with Jonathan's Landing. I'm sure the zoning administrator especially, because we live next to industrial. What do we hear? Industrial noise all day long. What do we see? Light pollution, that's reality. Our master plan does not have buffer zoning between residential and industrial? That doesn't make any sense. Why is there not a buffer to give the people who already live here that peace of mind that they're not gonna be right next to a manufacturing plant? I live next to one. I hear it daily. My windows open, I hear it. I run a fan twenty-four seven. We need to clearly look at that master plan. We need to have buffer zoning for our existing residential. You can't just have industrial next to residential. Otherwise, you end up living like I do, with noise. Thank you.
Hi, Connie Jones, I'm twenty-seven fifty Papa. The one thing that I wanna stress is important to me, is that EMS building is right there. And if we build anything that has a stream of cars coming, let's say it's a factory that's small and they all leave at three o'clock, and we have parents picking up kids, if that ambulance has to get out and they got a string of cars standing there on Tulley trying to get off to fifty-nine, what happens? I mean, it might not sound like a big thing to think about, but it could be one of us they're coming to get. And I don't pay with building anything that will promote a lot of traffic.
I'm Mike Williams, two nine two nine Papa Lane. Yeah, I just wanna say I live right there, next to that property. Hey, I mean, it's like from here to these guys here. And if they build there and they build on the L, that's surrounded, I'm surrounded. So I just can't imagine I'm building anything. I really don't know what I'll say because I'm getting real mad, everybody said everything they need to say. I just appreciate if you look at what they're gonna do, whether they destroy our neighborhood. Thanks.
I don't have too much prepared, but Ellen Schwartz, two oh seven one Tulley Road. And we live directly across the street from these two properties. I understood it was research and technology, I was unaware of the master plan. We appreciate the agricultural, the view out of our front windows, the peace, the tranquility that we have amongst it. And the buffer zone to me already exists. I see nature and I see where there is a tree line and there's not light pollution that's coming to keep my property lit up twenty-four seven, let alone noise that the other lady reminded us of. And I'm just speaking on behalf that we appreciate the tranquility and the peace and that we have in the neighborhood and, and that potential buffer zone that already exists there. Thank you.
Hey, any other speakers?
Yeah, so you wanna go up there?
George Winding. Wife's Patty's here. We live at two zero six one Tulley Road, directly across the street from twenty fifty.
Brady, you mentioned that there wasn't residential west of the property, but there are residential, so just wanna correct that.
But what I wanted to say was that I grew up in Detroit, we've been out here for over thirty years. And I grew up in Detroit in a residential area that was right next to a bunch of industrial area with a bunch of small factories. And when you get factories in there, you get all sorts of workers from other places. And both my mother and my older sister were assaulted and robbed from people coming from the factories walking past our house. And without knowing what they're gonna put in there, I don't, I really don't think that we need any industry there. Thank you.
Hi, Ken, this is Madison, seven one ninety-six Mary Lane. I, I don't necessarily have a lot of skin in the game on this one, but I've taken great interest in these issues, so I have some thoughts I wanted to share. Yes, it is obviously noted as industrial flex in the master plan's future land use, but I don't think that necessarily means that the first or any request to rezone must be approved. And such approval should be done with intention and care, which you guys have, have seemed to be doing a great job of. So I just wanted to encourage you to continue that thoughtfulness because without a specific use being presented and with no conditional rezoning, like you mentioned, what's it called? There's really no limits to which of those principal uses could go in there. So I feel it's impossible to say tonight if it's a, if this is a reasonable rezoning request given the neighboring residential properties. As a mother, I relate strongly to the concerns that were eloquently enumerated in a public comment that was emailed in. I'm guessing you probably remember that one. Because I think there are only a couple related to this topic tonight. So any, any uses that go next to residential really ought to be clear and specific for the protection of families. I too, we're still at industrial, especially when it comes next to people's homes. And I do appreciate the applicant's consideration that he's expressed. But again, without that conditional rezoning and no real answers as to what the intended uses, I still feel there's too much risk to allow this rezoning to proceed. It's entirely possible that maybe there's an industrial flex use that could reasonably fit. But with the absence of that critical piece of information, I would encourage you to reject this rezoning request.
Anybody else before I wander up there?
Go ahead. Me? All right. Once again, Charles Smith, eleven fifty-one thirty-six Fleming Road. There's an old saying that you can't fight City Hall. You guys aren't City Hall. You work with us, you work for us, okay? Nobody wants to fight you guys. There was a lot of frustration, a lot of tension when we found out at the last minute about the data centers, okay? There's been a lot of research done on it, myself, a bunch of people in this room, okay? We don't want it, all right? There's strength in numbers, all right? We expect you folks to be part of those numbers, all right? I mean, I'm just saying, I have lived in this county, okay? You see this old brain here? Still works from time to time, I'm gonna put my hat back on. Anyhow, I have lived in Gregory, I have lived in Fowlerville, I have lived in Heartland, I have lived in, I graduated from Hollywood, moved here when I was four years old from Ann Arbor, okay? I have been in this Livingston County that I love forever. I did a short stint at Lake Spear State College where I got my degree in natural resources, okay? I know whereof I speak about this crap, it's gonna destroy this place. You can't let that happen, folks, you can't, all right? The next thing is, I am currently an environmental manager at a company in Hartford. And I have to go, every year I have to go through and prove how well we are doing with the people that work there. Everything we're trying to do to maintain the responsibility of a manufacturing facility, okay? I'm the guy that does that, I'm the guy that tells the president, you can't do that. And he respects that. I'm used to that, I'm used to looking at things, I'm used to saying, this is wrong, we can't do it. And this is where we're at. Shit, also do that to Ben Little. Okay, so this push for the data centers is coming right from the top of our state elected officials. That's not us, okay? That's not us. They're selling us up, they're selling us down the frickin' road, and I hate it, I hate it. I currently live out there, I've lived there for twenty years. I am going to retire this year. I wanna be able to sit on my back porch that I have paid for on three acres, I planted over a hundred trees on it.
Thirty seconds.
It's nothing but beautiful, okay? Don't let them do this to us because for four years, that's gonna be under construction. For four years, I'm gonna smell diesel, I'm gonna hear beep, 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 I'm gonna hear heavy equipment. How many parts for heavy equipment? I have been to every heavy equipment, John Deere, Caterpillar, Volvo, Case, New Holland, everything. That's what I do. I'm involved in that, I know exactly what's gonna happen. This isn't any, you know, yeah, making this shit up is a gold, pardon me, okay? This is a terrible thing. This is a terrible thing for our community. Please, work with us, don't let this happen, all right? And I'm not gonna stop, folks, I'm gonna be here for every meeting. I got like twenty pages of stuff, and every meeting I'm gonna be talking about things. I love this town, I love this township, I love this county, and I love our state of Michigan. It's beautiful, it's a winter water wonderland. We're crying out loud, don't let them turn it into a data center dead land. We can't have that.
Hi, my name is Jennifer.
One sec, Jen. You're certainly welcome to attend every one of our meetings, sir.
Oh, I can attend every meeting, I'm going to the state meetings, I'm going everywhere.
This is a public hearing about a rezoning request, part of the meeting, though, but.
Isn't that what they're trying to do?
Put a data center across the street from my house? No, they're not. This is.
Well, it's rezoning.
Yeah, it is a rezoning request. No, the call to the public is item thirteen, this is, but regardless.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said we were there.
No, we're at the, are we?
We're still on the rezoning.
I, I, yeah, I think you were talking about the rezoning.
It blurs together some nights, you know? I'm sorry, Jen, I'm taking from your time.
I live on Papa Lane, I was thinking that, like, I understand the property was bought the way it's zoned and every single resident there knew what it was. And so that, okay, maybe we have to accept that. But to put it and make it what he wants it and have twenty acres, now you're opening up a bigger window that the residents who live there and moved there didn't know that. So when we moved in, we knew what it was and we accepted that. We could have bought it, Brady, and we chose not to. But what we're asking is, if it is what it is, then we have to accept that. But if you make that bigger, then you are bringing in something that none of us even had an idea about. So there is a difference between me building a business on seven acres where you actually need the, the market for it versus building it on twenty acres and now there's a bigger variety of what he can do to have the market. So yes, he can build these things on the seven acres, but will he have the market for it on seven acres? Maybe not, possibly not, but he will on twenty. So that's why I think for most of us, we're like, don't make it bigger than what it is. It is what it is, please don't make it bigger for us that live there and did not expect that. Thank you.
Michelle Vachita, thirty-two fifty-two Warner Road. A couple points here, Brady mentioned that it was in line with the current things in the area and he talked about the EMS building, which is at the end of the road. There are residents on three sides of this seven acre parcel. Also at the other end of the road is going to be a one hundred and twenty-six acre park. Industry is not in line with the one hundred and twenty-six acre park, it is not in line with residential homes. You can keep the seven acres exactly how it is because I know someone tried to scare us and say big box store could go in there. A big box store needs more than seven acres for the parking lot. So you can leave it zoned exactly how it is, the way we go there would be small. As the other resident said, when you open it up to twenty, it gets much bigger and it changes what it is. The airport is one thing, the neighborhood is residential. The park is a place for families to go. I'm glad he said it won't be a data center. What he didn't say it wouldn't be are the reasons we don't want a data center. We don't want light pollution, he didn't promise that. We don't want noise, he didn't promise that. We don't want pollution in general. So we ask that you don't rezon this and you leave our neighborhood as is. Thank you.
Paul Johnson, two seven five zero Papa Lane, just a little more point to make. The argument for the rezoning, one of the arguments for the rezoning is that across the street is the airport. When you look at, what's, what's across the street from the airport? There's houses all along, there's houses on Tulley, there's houses on, on Bowlin. You know, excluding across fifty-nine, that's a whole different environment there. But I just wanna point out that, you know, this is, this is an airport surrounded by houses, not by any industry.
Damned All, thirty-five thirty-one Warner Road. So I'm not, I don't really have any skin in the game, I do drive down Tulley Road, you know, quite often, but, but I, as far as industrial goes, I can understand everybody's concern about that. And I don't know if Mr. McCurry maybe considered something like daycare, a sit-at living or memory care facility there that would go along with the La Casa building, plus would keep it residential, so. If that's something he would consider zoning it for that. Over here, EMS. They got EMS right there too, so.
I know, I think about it all the time.
I think that property would be better suited for something like that, where people actually live, so it keeps the residential portion in, in place without bringing in industry, industry into the area.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chair, are, are we allowed to address the public?
Not generally.
Okay, not generally.
Want you to have an exception, on favor?
Hey, it's the will of the people, man. So, so I guess I, I just want you guys to know that had you been coming to our meetings before, when we used to see maybe one, two people, most of them were applicants. We are very, this board is very serious about buffering and light and water. Every plan that comes before us. Every plan that comes before us, we look at it and we think about how the, how it's gonna impact the people or the areas around there. So I hope that that puts your, your mind at ease, that we just don't approve things without really asking the hard questions, and especially buffering, that's, that's a huge thing with us, you know? So, I don't know where the, the lady was that lived next to the warehouse, but we've looked at many plans and we always talk about, what are you gonna do about the noise? So I just want you to know that that's, don't ever worry about us not taking that kind of stuff seriously. Um, the other thing I will have to say is, um, it is zoned for retail and service, so not, not talking about industrial, I'm just saying that something could come there, you guys, it could be the lights, it could, I'm just saying, be prepared and be vigilant, you know, um, may... Right, no, but, but I mean, there's two, there's two parcels there, though, so, I, I, but...
You can always zone the other one.
Right, but I, I, so I'm just saying, though, is that, you know, once, once the data center, whatever happens with that, we would encourage you to keep coming back, because things come before us all the time. And if nobody says anything, if nobody comes, that's when you say, boy, what happened? Well, what happened is nobody came to express a concern, or, so I'm just encouraging you that this is happening in your own backyard, and we, we've many times said, where is everybody? So, anyway, just, just, just wanting you to know that. I, I appreciate you guys coming forward now, but I'm saying, there's stuff that happens all the time that impacts where you live, it may not be down your street, but it's impacting your community. So, I hope you guys will continue coming, so...
So is there a list, I mean, you guys, I actually had a look it up when I got the notice that they wanted to rezone it industrial flex. Is there a list somewhere where it lists what are the potential things? So where would I find that, just to see what, what could possibly even go on that piece of property?
Of course, sure.
If, if, everything is on the township website. If you go to the township website and you go to, it'll be zoning ordinances, and it'll have, I think it's four hundred pages, and just, you just go right down.
So what are like, okay, so what are the top ten?
For that, do you, do you have...
Brady can read, now, in, in zoning, in zoning, you'll have uses, permitted uses. Those are uses that you could, you don't need a special land use for. And then there's also uses by a special land use, which comes under a little bit more scrutiny from the planning commission and the township board, so...
I think what you're asking is, what are like the next ten plans?
You know, I wanna know is, so say you, yeah, you zone it all, this industrial flex, what potentially, I mean, in a retail, that's, yeah, anyways, um, what could happen?
Okay, so these are the permitted uses for the industrial flex zone. General office buildings, public or private, educational and training facilities, facilities for experimental product development, business and scientific research and testing laboratories, photography, art and graphic art studios, sale or leasing of motorized passenger vehicles, including cars and trucks, outdoor sales display, lots in connection with such use shall not require a special use permit for an open air business. Sale or leasing of used motorized passenger vehicles in conjunction with a new car dealership, warehouses and distribution centers, warehousing, wholesaling, refrigerated and general storage conducted completely within a building or structure.
Does it give you dimensions, like how big can they build on that property?
There is requirements on zoning with setbacks, uh, maximum lot coverage, along with, uh...
Like, are we talking ten thousand square feet?
It would, it depends, it depends on the site. There's, our zoning ordinances have restrictions, like Chairman Williams is saying, where you, you can't build a building that goes all the way up to the property line. There's, there's amount of coverage that you can have on a spot that encompasses your building, your parking lot, you, all those things are, are set in there. There's lighting restrictions that they would have to follow, there's, uh...
Landscaping.
Landscaping restrictions, and just from my experience on here, something like this, that close to residential, um, we're gonna be very protective of that, and we would hope that whoever did anything would be a, as well. You're, Mr. Noble, you're concerned about the drains on there. We're gonna look at that, too. They're, whoever does anything at this property is gonna submit a site plan, and I work for the drain office. I guarantee ya, I'm gonna be looking at that, I, you know, Mr. Recker, who you talked with, he's gonna be looking at it, and there's not gonna be water coming off this site unless that, this property owner, whoever it is, has worked an arrangement with some neighboring property for a drainage easement, and if that doesn't work out, they've gotta deal with it themselves. And that would, that could put more restrictions, because retaining your, retaining pods are, are, are part of your lot coverage requirements, so...
So, and I agree with this lady, it is what it is. I didn't know when we moved in thirty years ago that that parcel, actually, we tried to buy that, but it didn't hurt, so we kinda moved on and, and moved a couple houses down. So I agree, okay, it is what it is, but don't cha, don't change. That's even charm, you know, that house, yeah, maybe it is, um, needs a lot of work, but there's still that old world charm that we're losing a lot of. And to tear down that beautiful, I don't, maybe you can't even use it, but the stone building, it's just a beautiful piece of property, and to clear it all for something that is not what we all want, I just really, really hope that you think real hard before you make that decision. Thank you.
I just wanted to know that Mr. Bull and Mr. Williams are abstaining from this. Um, does Mr. Heath have a word in this, or we just got four people voting on this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and if it's a tie, is that good, bad, or otherwise? Does he have to have a majority?
Has to be a majority.
So a tie is no good either? Okay, I just wanna make sure.
We have, we would need...
You'd need four.
We would need four votes.
Needs to be the majority of the board?
You need four on a board approval?
From two people abstaining, there's four of us left, we need four votes, yea or nay, for this.
Okay, I'm just, I'm sure, so this is very unusual.
I'm right, right, here, I'm...
This is very unusual, both then, right?
Yeah, is there two substitutes or something?
I believe you're right.
Yeah, we have this on the, the Bowen Road, that rezoning there, I think, I think that was three to one.
So it's a good question, right?
The record, a tie is a no, because you didn't get approval.
Hi, it's Jennifer, um, all due respect, I know you keep saying, well, if you rezone it, then you're gonna be concerned or thinking about the rest of the residents there, but if you are concerned about the rest of, rest of the residents, about what we think, we're telling you, we don't want you to rezone it. So that concerns me. The other thing is, on the, the seven acres, what is he allowed, what is somebody allowed to build? Because I do know, especially when I bought my house, that they said what you said with the twenty acres, you can only build a certain size, a certain amount of parking lot away from the property line on the property, which means whatever is built there, there must be a market for it. So if somebody's gonna do that, 'cause I thought about doing it, and I'm like, well, there isn't a huge market, 'cause there's so many limitations on the size that I can build. So what can he build there? Anybody can build there.
Present.
With the way it's zoned, I'm asking you, what can build?
Okay, the permitted uses are automotive gasoline and service stations in accordance, um... with a different article.
Are you, are you reading IFC or RSC?
Yeah, uh...
NFC.
RSC.
You are, you are in RSC?
This is currently zoned, and this is what you're telling us.
Yes, this is a seven acre park or parcel.
There it goes, nothing to do about that.
Yes.
Okay, let's read the placement.
Okay, um, automotive gasoline and service stations, drive-in retail and service establishments, regional shopping centers, and commercial kennels.
Commercial what?
Kennels.
But, but there's still the restrictions of the building can only be this size, the parking lot, so, on seven acres.
Yeah.
So though you keep bringing up, it can be retail, again, you're talking about, there has to be a certain size, a certain parking lot, and is there a market? So that does not compare to rezoning it in twenty acres. We are actually very bright, Howell, and we can do math, just like, you know? Thank you.
Okay. Um, I wanna thank everyone for their input, it's valuable, it's welcomed, and, uh, we do appreciate it, absolutely. Uh, it is encouraging to see this building full.
Should tell you, we think you did a pretty good job right up until... We all got concerned about a certain state.
It's, it's not my data center, sir. Okay, um, moving on to, oh, motion to close scheduled public hearing.
So moved?
Support.
This Matt?
Support?
Thank you. Motion for Robert, support from Matt Stanley, Stanley, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to item eleven is other matters to be reviewed by the commission.
You gotta vote on it.
We gotta talk about this.
Did we not vote to close the public hearing?
We, no, we did, but we, we have to vote.
On the rezoning request, I'm sorry, I'm just going down the list, guys. Okay, um, do we have a motion on the proposed rezoning request for these two parcels on Tulley Road? And again, Mr. Bull and I have to recuse ourselves from, uh, voting and participating due to conflicts of interest.
Mr. Chair, I, I do have a question, and maybe Jonathan, you can help me with this since you're the zoning administrator. If, if the applicant was willing to table this issue and come back with maybe a conditional rezoning on some of the uses they may be interested in, would that be possible for them to do?
The applicant can do that, you can ask them to.
Thank you, that's all I needed. But if, if this was denied, they could come back, correct?
So if you're denied a rezoning request, you have to wait a year before you can come back? It has, it has to play out the whole process, though, 'cause your recommendation goes to county planning, that's a recommendation goes to township board, so...
What about a tabling?
Tabling doesn't do anything.
Yeah, I think that's worth, worth emphasizing, we're not the final say on this. We provide a recommendation to others to add to that.
Who's the final say?
The township board. We, we make a determination, the Livingston County Planning, uh, Commission makes a determination. Like the chairman said, it's, it's recommendatory. Ultimately, the township board makes the decision.
So do they get to hear all of us?
I hope so.
You can go to that meeting.
You gotta go to the trustee meeting.
So you're gonna hear us again?
Yeah, this, this would be...
You can go to that meeting and say exactly what you said tonight.
This is just a recommendation, we're just, we just recommend.
This is only, this is the only public hearing that you're gonna have for this issue. At the township meeting or the planning meeting, it would be a, a call to the public, but you'd have your chance to speak again. Did you hear Mr. Al, he said if, if, if we table it, does it still move forward?
No.
Okay.
No.
It moves forward with an approval and with a denial, with a tabling.
If you're tabling it, you need to have a reason why you're tabling it, just like you need to include your findings when you make a motion. So are we ready to make a motion, do we need to talk about this a little more?
Well...
I, I mean, any concerns? I mean, this is a, this is a tough one, I mean, I've been on this commission for second longest, and this is probably the, the toughest one I've seen so far.
Information of what it's gonna be.
Because of the, the parcel in the middle. Uh, I mean, and I love hearing the passion of all the residents, and this is an extremely difficult job, but we have a responsibility to Mr. McCurry as well, to hear his side of the story, so, uh...
We have it heard.
And, and, and I will, you know, I will, will say, we have a job here to, to, uh, promote, or not promote, to enforce our, our zoning that, that we have. I look at this and I see industrial flex as a future land use. So when that mess, when that was planned, was put together, it was anticipated that that was gonna be there. La Casa is on the IFC zoning. There's two houses that, I don't even know if you'd know they were there unless you saw the drive, you know? If you drive, and if you drive by it, there's two houses that are, are offset off the road, yep. They're, they're industrial flex zoning as well. Somebody could buy those houses and do exactly what Mr. McCurry or a purchaser or whatever, somebody, somebody could do that. You know, I am like Commissioner Newsom, I'm torn, too. I, I hear all what you guys are saying, and you, you may disagree. Um, I hear what you're saying, you know, I, we live on Crandall Road. I still remember my wife crying in the front seat of our pickup truck when they were cutting all the trees down on Tulley and, and Warner and Bowen. So, you know, this, you know, we make decisions listening to what people say. Um, but we're also tied by what our ordinances say, too. And, and I just hope that you guys, you know, respect that. Um, you know, we've had some tough meetings here, uh, in the past couple of months. And it's a, it's a tough job, and I hope you guys, you know, respect what we do, but we're, we're, we're representing you, we were chosen by the township board, and, and we're trying to do our best to represent you. Not that we, not that we make the decisions that everybody here wants to hear or walks out wanting to hear, but, you know, that's...
Rob, can I ask for clarification? So are you saying La Casa is an IFZ zoning?
For a future, yeah, it look... Future land use, it's, it's...
Okay, but when, but when it was approved to build, what, what was, it was what?
RSC.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanna clear, okay, that's what I wanna clarification on, okay, so...
Can I make a, a suggestion? Do speak in abbreviations.
Oh, I just, yeah, industrial flex zone, industrial, was it, was La Casa, was La Casa built as a flex, as industrial flex zone? And he said, no, it was, uh, it was the...
I think it was airport commercial at one point, but then it changed over to RS, residential service commercial.
So is it always this way when you wanna rezone a piece of property, that they do not have to disclose what their intentions on that piece of property are going to be?
Very often, be, because people may be asking for a re, rezoning request and, and sell the property, or not know what they're gonna do with the property.
Yeah, but like I said before, somebody buys a piece of property, and obviously, he's bought the one with the highly anticipated buying this one, you have a idea in your mind what you're going to build. That's all we're looking for is, can you be a little bit more transparent? And we're all homeowners, and we all surround that piece of property. We've all lived there for many, many years. We just wanna know, what are your intentions of doing with that piece of property? Are you gonna put a gas station up?
Whoever owns it can do whatever, I think we sell it.
No, no, this is getting a little out of control.
Yeah, we're getting on the rails a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I am concerned that, I haven't lived here my whole life, I know my family has, but a lot of people have been. I'm concerned that you keep saying that you owe him something, like you gotta think of him, and I'm like, what about all the other people? Like, there's a lot of people here saying, begging you, don't do it. Leave it as it is. If you leave it as it is, this is what somebody decided a long time ago. Leave it as it is. I work in this school system, and I say, leave it as it is. Like, why do you keep messing with something?
Well, I know, but let's be clear, somebody said they wanted to keep the house up there. It it's zoned, anybody could come and knock that house down or that barn down the way that it's zoned. So I just, just want to make sure we're clear about that.
But if you leave them just like they are, zoned, you have the restrictions, he can still build a business, and the people are still taken care of. So when you're thinking, oh, well, we're just gonna let him do this, my whole thought is it must be a money thing. And if it's a money thing, I'm not sure we really have a say. Because if you're thinking about the people and him, he can still build the business. We're saying, we're not trying to stop him from building a business. We're trying to stop him from taking over, so we can't, we don't have to live with that, like, all of the problems that are gonna come with it. Right now, Popple Lane gets their water tested from the river because of the industrial place right next door. People come two or three times a year because it's already polluted. There used to be fish, and there isn't fish anymore. Then they said, can we test your well because we think the pollution went into your well? So my house is fine, but I know the people on Popple Lane, so again, you have no idea what you're messing with with our health. And so I I don't understand, you're, don't say you're doing it for us and you're.
No, that's not what Rob was saying. What Rob is trying to explain is not, we, we had no, we had no control over the master plan. Master plan says this can be rezoned. He's coming before asking us. It's already rezoned, what, I guess I'm, I just, I guess I want to make, make sure everybody understands. The house in the barn can go anytime, it doesn't matter how, it could, the way it's zoned right now, the house in the barn could go. Anything could come up that might inter, impact lighting or sound or whatever. I guess we're just trying to say that we try to do our due diligence. We are listening to you, but sometimes our hands are tied on some of this stuff. That's why some townships are being sued right now. Because something's allowed, and people say no, and they say, okay, then here we go. So I I guess Rob is just trying to explain to you that sometimes there's things that we don't have control over. So it's not that we're not listening to you, we are listening to you.
But do you have control over not taking this further to rezonate? Is that where you're in control?
That's, that's.
Because again, I tried to start a business, and I looked into all the rezoning, and I know that what you can build on commercial and what you can build on agriculture are not the same thing. So somebody can't come in and destroy the house and build the same thing on both pieces of property. So he has seven acres where he's restricted because the other one is agriculture. So you, this panel has the ability to say, no, it is what it is, use it for what you can build on and leave it alone. Then you're helping all of us, and you're helping him. So that's what we're asking you.
Decision is a recommendation to the township board. So we don't have the final say.
But you can stop it, am I not, like you.
They not approve it.
We could deny this. The county could approve it, and the township board could approve it. That can happen. And the township board is the deciding factor on there. So you really could have us deny it, the county deny it, and the township board approve it, and it would, it would be.
And and I know that as a teacher, that a teacher's saying of like, I can say yes or no, but but my voice, your voice, to the next level makes a difference. So we need you to have a voice and hear what we're saying. That's what we're asking.
I'm just wondering, who makes the master plan? Who's responsible for that? Because it seems like they just want to keep progressing, if you will, for every piece of land in Livingston County. And there's no way for any of us to stop it. So who makes the master plan?
They ask for our input. They send out a survey and put it online and ask for the community's input. I think they got what, like.
Oh, I did that.
So very, very few people provided their input, and that's when they go off when they create the master plan.
So what's getting into the master plan?
The, our, we, we created it, when was our last plan?
November, November of two, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. That was, that was the last update. I think the overhaul was in fourteen or sixteen or something.
So like nine years ago, it was completely overhauled. And it would be, it was, there was input from the public, there was approval here, and then final approval by the township board, adopting the Matt's master plan.
Proudness that for years we felt comfortable. And nobody did. But it's, and it's our fault, it's as many as we did, we're not.
I just have a question with what Ray said earlier. He's gonna get approval on it. We, I mean, you don't change the master plan, so let's just get to the thing. Is he going to be forced to do something with Popple Lane when he builds whatever he's building? Is he gonna have to turn the entrance to Popple Lane into a class A road? Or are we going to eat all of the traffic that bypasses the entrance of whatever he's building?
So that's a site plan related question. So once the rezoning is gone or is there, so when someone comes in with what they want to do on that property, that's where those questions will be answered. And there'll be hearings for that, too.
So if he builds something small enough on the property, then he's not gonna have to do anything with Popple Lane.
We could simply say you can't have access to a private road.
But I'm not worried about what he does. What I'm worried about is the three hundred people that are going to his business.
Coming in off of Tulley.
That that pass, that coming off Tulley, that pass the entrance to the place, where are they gonna turn around in?
Well, there's a thing, Popple Lane.
On Popple Lane.
They're gonna turn around.
And I believe that's in front of your home. You see what I'm saying? So everybody knows that when you're going somewhere and you're chatting with somebody and you're on the phone, you pass the entrance.
Uh-oh, you're not supposed to be chatting on the phone.
What do you do? You turn instantly to the next entrance, which is Popple Lane.
Very true.
And turn around.
Very true.
So it's a private drive that we're having a hard time maintaining now, and now you're gonna add all this traffic to it. That's all I wanted to say about that, is I think it needs to be addressed sooner or later.
I have something they might, there's perk up, if you'll pardon the pun. She said that property wouldn't perk when she wanted to buy it. What does he have to do to make it perk or will it need a perk?
There's city water consumer down there.
Just curious, because I didn't know.
I have a question. I have a question about the master plan. Nine years ago was quite some time ago. I mean, I'm a Livingston County resident for twenty-some years, not like my current address. There's been a lot of change here. I've seen it, and I'm not the oldest one in the room by any means.
What are you insinuating?
That I got people maybe on my side, but nine years ago was, was a lo, was a long time ago.
We, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act says that we have to do something, and chime in, Brady, you guys are smarter than I am. Every five years, we have to redo it or update it. And like Mr. Bull said, it was twenty twenty-three. When we, we kind of updated it. We didn't spend the money to do a full-blown plan, you know, revision. We updated it, and I, that, you know, that was before I was on the commission, but. So it, it's, it's every five years. So in twenty twenty-eight, we will be either doing a update or a complete, you know.
So I may have just personally missed it from one of my ownerships, started by just a hair, so I want to have that awareness as far as if something were mailed out to us, so it's good to know. Thank you. But it doesn't get mailed out to us. You have to be, you have to be aware of what's going on or this happens.
Am I correct in saying that if you're closer than three hundred feet to a situation that you would be mailed a notification, is that what that would?
No, I got one.
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure.
My neighbors here got one.
Yeah, not for the master plan, though. I think they sent out postcards, was that, there was a survey?
Sounds right.
Yes, and you're.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so discussion on the rezoning. We set for a motion of yay, day, table?
I think we need more information what the business is gonna be.
It would be nice to know. But we can't.
We're not, we're not gonna know.
This is about the zoning of the piece of property. You know, and again, the master plan, I mean, when it works in your favor, it's good. And when it doesn't work in your favor, it's bad. So our, our responsibility too is to look at that master plan and make decisions based on that. That's the intent of the master plan is.
Isn't it two properties being sold?
It is. It is, it is. There's two different pieces of property that we're looking at.
So I understand a hundred percent what you're saying. But just because it's in the master plan doesn't mean we have to do that.
Well, I, I agree.
And I guess I'm saying, everybody knows our house is our biggest financial asset.
Yep.
And I am, I am concerned. I did appreciate you reading out what could be built there. That was very good, and that, that was my bad, I should have looked at that. But I'm saying there are a lot of neighbors, there are a lot of homes around there, and. And so I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling. But again, master plan does not mean we have to, we have to move on it.
I agree with Sharon.
And Brady, I have a question. Your brother's street is out for me. Current zoning versus future land use. What's the crossover? When does that future land use, is that like tomorrow? Is that fifty years from now?
There's no time limit for. It'd be tonight? Rezoning.
Okay. So that wasn't from the future at the point that ink was right on that document?
Yes.
So current zoning still applies?
So tonight, we're waiting for this board to make a decision in regards to their recommendation.
Correct.
Is there a motion in place yet for that?
Yet.
You know what? The, the apprehensiveness of this board is telling, yeah, it's telling me a lot.
Okay, well, you know what? Right now, this is a discussion amongst us. So that's what called the public is.
Absolutely.
So right now, it's a discussion amongst us where we think we need to go.
Right.
For, for those of you with. And once again, this is not easy. Come sit up here and look out, and look out at all these people. No, that's.
Some of you, some of you out there might be up here next month.
Yes, correct.
You know who you are.
For those of you with a computer, it might help if you go through twenty-three point oh-two-five, because that has the, the section that goes through the findings you're supposed to have to make a determination.
I don't have a computer.
Aren't they in the planners' report?
Have you thrown the book at me?
Where?
Twenty-three point, so section twenty-three, article twenty-one.
It's got Roman numbers on it, that's not good.
It's in the findings for rezoning section.
Tabs are numbered.
Oh.
And then it's twenty-three point oh-two D five.
Twenty-three oh-two.
Yep.
D five.
D five.
I don't even know where we're looking. First to future.
Is there air in this place?
There's been a lot of hot air in here.
Seventy-eight degrees in here. There's no air flow period.
That's it right there. Kind of conflicts it a little bit.
Do we need to talk through all four of these?
All we would be asking is people to agree, because you're supposed to do the right thing, because people are like, if you do, then you're gonna be done with it.
Do we need to talk through all four, all four of these points and decide? You know, findings for rezoning on.
I would address each one.
Yeah.
And discuss it with yourself.
I feel if we're off on one, just if we're off on one.
I've already looked at it, and I, well, there is one that I don't, I mean, so, so, but I think we need to do that. You guys, you guys need to discuss it. When we make a motion, you have to say why you're denying it, and it would be that particular item. So it'd be.
Well, then I nominate you or Rob to do it.
Two, two.
To go through each of these things?
I'll, I'll, I'll read, we have to read them.
Because I think I already tipped, I think I already showed my hand.
Just have somebody read them, and then just discuss each one as they go by.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I know that you have recused yourself, but I would like to have Mike go through each of those points, and we can talk about them.
So we're gonna talk about them. So the fi, in the planners' report, the findings for rezoning. A, whether the rezoning is consistent with the policies and uses proposed for that area in the township, master use plan.
Have you discussed that in certain?
I think we've discussed that, it said. B, whether all uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be compatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area.
That's my, that's my point, that's my struggle right there.
Okay. So C, whether any public services or facilities would be significantly adversely impacted by a development or use allowed under the requested rezoning.
And I would say, because I know everybody that's sitting at this table, we have had these discussions before, and we have been very, very thorough on our demands and our expectations for every applicant that comes before us. So still struggling with the second one. The third one, I have full faith in our abilities to make a decision on that.
And finally, D, whether uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be equally or better suited to the area than uses allowed under the current zoning of the land.
It's a mystery.
Yeah, that one's a mystery.
Can I ask a question? Four questions. My question is this. I just drove down Tulley Road, three days ago. I wanted to see the lay of the land down there. Man, you plug up one end, you're screwed. You are screwed to try to get out of there.
You got something else?
How does that work with the EMS and all that kind of stuff?
So back to our discussion. Okay.
Is, somebody feel.
I agree with you guys.
Strongly enough to make a motion?
Jonathan, this.
Go ahead, Rob, I'm sorry.
This session talks about amending, section twenty-three is talks about amending the zoning ordinance and map.
That's what you're doing.
So we're changing the zone?
Looking at changing current to future land use.
You let us know, Rob, when you're ready.
Well, I'm, don't wait for me.
So we have to wait for you, brother.
So we have to wait for you, brother.
Motion? Anybody?
Take care of the room.
So...
That's my motion. Take care of the room.
I'm not sure enough to make the motion, but I, I'm ready to vote if you will.
You are?
Mm-hmm.
Are you ready to vote?
Um, if somebody makes a motion, then.
Okay, okay.
So are we gonna, we, we need two separate motions, correct? One for each or can we cover all in one?
I mean, technically, you only had the public hearing for ten A. So you were making the decision on ten A.
Can we open the public hearing for ten B?
Motion to open the public hearing for agenda item ten B to rezone twenty-fifty Two Lee Road parcel twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-five. Or parcel forty-seven oh-six dash twenty-two dash three hundred dash zero zero three from AR agricultural residential to industrial flex zone.
How about make that motion?
Support.
You got that, John? Does anybody wish to speak about that?
Ask for a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Since we're working on two, three, three hundred and two Lee Road, um, in my opinion, from what I'm hearing from you guys and stuff like that and these people over here, um, we don't, we don't want that, this change. And in my opinion, it's a win-win for the person that's trying to change it because you guys both know it all. And then we, we basically go to the other meetings and stop, stop it there. Um, he's just gonna, hopefully he'll put some houses in there. And that way, it'll fit that, that side of the road on that. If you guys vote the other way, you just have a bunch of angry residents that basically don't like any of you guys. So it's still a point. I understand what you guys do. You need, it's a very important job, you basically, I don't understand the, the, the master plan. I've never, I mean, I've looked at many of them and stuff like that in the past. And I stay away from them and I just said, because they, the boards do what they do. But I appreciate you guys, and what, and listening to all these people and stuff like that. Farland, it's earned the way it's been for him. Commercial has more money. That's why he wants that. Uh, residential, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little less because of depending on what he puts in there. Thank you.
Put that a vote?
No, we just, what we just did was, in fact, me.
Of course.
Just opened up the second public hearing, um, on the agenda ten B, so.
Can we ask that comments be applied to both public hearings?
Yeah, of course.
Um, I actually, uh, I, I don't think that if you don't vote my way that I won't like you. I know I don't know you, but I've, I've been free the whole time because I, I know this is a huge burden. Um, so I am sorry you have to carry this burden, but it is on your shoulders. And so we ask that you take everything into consideration.
Ray Noble, I've seen you talking about doing farmhouse prior to Chuck. I, I would, uh, just wanna be respectful of what you said about the neighbor screening, especially with the CASA being in there. And, uh, some of the weird properties. So again, the water flow wouldn't be respectful of, of screening for the other private property and the CASA.
I knew you were gonna walk up there.
How can you go there? Chuck Smith, five-one-three-six, One Lee Road. Question, how tall are these buildings gonna be?
There's no site plan.
We don't know until there's a site plan.
Brady can tell us how tall it can be. He can, he can, I don't have a computer, but he can tell you how tall.
Because I can build one above twenty feet on my property. He said what I was told.
You guys find it quickly.
I'm looking for.
Maximum of seventy feet unless reduced.
Unless reduced by the maximum permitted by the Livingston County Airport zoning ordinance.
How tall?
Seventy feet.
Thank you.
So that's not gonna wrap anybody up, right?
That has to be, that has to be, that has to be near the airport.
Yeah, right.
It's gotta fall under that, so.
Planes will hit that building.
Yeah, it's a short commitment farther away.
Tim Bowden, first of all, I just got a one question. If you do rezone it to the industrial, what's to stop them from zoning it to the data center if they include more?
Anybody could sell any property. We can't, I mean, that's.
It'd be the wrong zoning.
Yeah, wrong zoning for one, but.
Wrong the others.
It'd be the wrong zoning.
Speak up, Matt. Let me speak up.
We don't have any zone record or proximity.
That's true.
Okay. Wacking any other participants? We have a motion to close the public hearing for ten B.
Uh, so moved.
I'll support. We have a motion, we have a support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we can talk about our motion and, um, put it together and vote. Well, you guys can vote. Do you want to hear it?
I'd say go ahead, I mean.
Okay. I'm gonna offer up a motion. I'm gonna combine the, the two hearings. Um, I'm gonna move to approve the rezoning request from the applicant for PC two-zero-two-five dash two-four on parcel number four-seven-zero-six dash two-two dash three-hundred dash zero-four-two from regional service, commercial to industrial flex zone, as well as parcel, uh, or planning commission twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-twenty-five or dash twenty-five, sorry, parcel four-seven-zero-six dash two-two dash three-hundred dash zero-zero-three from agricultural residential to industrial flex zone, zoning. For conversation and decision.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Spalding. Any discussions or friendly amendments or are we ready for a vote?
Well, we can.
You have some support. Oh, right.
I'll support.
Who was the second?
I was.
Sharon.
You need a, you need a question answered?
So you're, you're approving it, Rob?
I'm, I'm, I've made a motion to approve the rezoning request.
That's what I thought. I don't know if I could support it.
Uh, Sharon supported it.
Just, yeah.
I said I don't know if I can.
Oh, okay, okay, then.
Wait, that just allowed us to have a vote, correct? Yeah, that was a, just a vote. Yeah, just a vote, just a vote. So, you're, even though you're still the chair.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To, to, to vote.
No, we, he's asking for a vote on the motion.
A vote on the motion.
Okay.
So, we have a motion on the board, we can discuss it. Is there any more discussion that we, I'm, I'm not, I'm, it's not my meeting, so.
Oh, okay. I said support, okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's up for discussion. Are you opposed to, uh, make a friendly amendment to the motion or questions pertaining to, I think we've covered it pretty thoroughly though, but.
Yeah, we covered it really thoroughly.
I agree.
So are we ready for a vote?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
Are you ready, Sharon? Are you ready, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Oppose?
So that's, uh, two in favor and two opposed.
This one does not pass.
They, they denied it, but that doesn't mean a lot.
It means that they consider everything that was discussed. It means they took everything into consideration. It means that that kid just go, yeah, okay, you have no idea.
Well, that was a lot of, that was a lot of.
Okay. Now, moving on to agenda item eleven. Other matters to be reviewed by the planning commission? There are none. Mr. Chair, sir?
Yeah. Were we gonna discuss the moratorium?
The what?
The moratorium.
Uh, I asked Jonathan to put it on the agenda. He said it was too soon. It was too short a notice and we couldn't cover it.
Can somebody explain that to us?
Are you, what are you?
Can somebody explain that to us?
Well, I had asked if we could put a, an item on the agenda to discuss the moratorium on data centers. And, uh, I sent that Sunday. Jonathan got it Monday. It's the day before the meeting.
We can, we can always change the.
We, we can add to the agenda.
Well, it would seem kind of alter handed.
We could've done that. But I, I thought it was gonna be here anyway. Anyways.
I think, I think, I think that they're gonna have.
Yeah, that meeting is still ongoing, folks.
Yep.
We tone it down a notch, please.
Well, maybe they don't care. Hey, if they don't care about.
Use your, uh.
I've counted.
A hammer?
Yeah.
I've always wanted to use this hammer.
Let it fly.
Tell us, please, we're, we're not quite done yet, but we're, we're getting there pretty soon.
It's not something that we would recommend or not recommend. It's unorthodox, unprecedented.
There you go.
Okay, um, our next item up was the other matters to be reviewed by the planning commission, item eleven. Um, there is nothing on our agenda for this. Typically, we just bypass it, but does anybody have a topic they wish to bring up?
I would like to bring up the moratorium that was mentioned that called the public.
Okay, we have a request from Mr. Bowle to discuss the data center moratorium. I don't think that needs a second. It's just a discussion.
So I think, um, I think we spoke on September twenty-third. Was it September twenty-third? I think we did. Uh, since then, the, the moratorium is gonna be pondered by the township board on Thursday. I think we've been asked to give a recommendation or how we feel about that to the township board as a planning commission. And I'm opening that up for discussion to my colleagues here.
Um, personally, I see the, the data center as a enormous, it's the biggest thing ever to come out of the township. As such, we have to do our due diligence and get input from, from, uh, neutral parties, so to speak. So, you know, the folks telling data centers are gonna be all in favor of it. People that hate data centers are gonna be totally against it. We need to, to get some unbiased input and facts to make an informed decision on it. And, uh, we simply haven't had the time to gain that knowledge to make a decision. The moratorium is really the only pertinent thing to do. And I would suggest striking the waiver from it. Make it a solid sixty-day or six-month moratorium.
Well, I, I, it's on the agenda on Thursday.
So it is on the agenda on Thursday. And I, and I'm willing to take it back at the township board level. I would just like to know how the PC feels about it. Wayne, I've understood yours.
Yeah, I, I think the moratorium is a good thing. This is a very contentious and heated discussion item. I think we need to do all of our due diligence. I, as far as recommending, recommending from this panel, it, it's unorthodox. It's not our procedures to, to recommend or tell them what you guys have on your agenda. Um, we work under, we work under you guys.
Absolutely.
So I, so, uh, whoseever idea it was, you know, I don't, I'm not saying it wasn't a bad idea. It's just, it's really not necessary. It's on the agenda. Um, if something wasn't on the agenda, I would be favorable, maybe recommending that they put it on the agenda, something like that. But in this case, I don't, I don't think any action from us makes a difference. It's gonna be discussed on Thursday. Everyone can come to the, to the meeting and, and, uh, I'm sure a lot of us will be there too, so.
So Timothy, this is a discussion between us. My question would be, um, there's probably some residents that like the idea of a data center because they like the community benefits and everything that's been talked about. Is it going to be six, what happens if some, okay, so six months to a business is forever. So really, six months, they're either... Six, no, no business is gonna say, well, six months, okay, I'll wait that long. Would they take four months? Would you guys consider, would people consider four months? Like, three months, four months?
They've had it since March.
Okay.
They have it. I want that to come along.
Okay, because, because the longer this drags out, um, you know, we've, we've already a couple of months in it with, with facts that keep being presented and I don't see much change in that. But if the trustees say six months is too long, then could it possibly be brought up to maybe say four months, just to, just to give a little understanding? I'm just asking.
On, on the packet, and I read the resolution that the board is gonna consider on, on Thursday, and it basically says six, up to six months. If you guys do something sooner, you, you could, or you could even extend it, right? Have you read it yet?
I did.
Yeah.
I did.
Okay. So I mean, I think the six months is.
So the, the purpose of the moratorium is to craft an ordinance.
Give us some.
So, I mean, it's gonna come back to us probably, right?
Yeah, so we give you all the help you need.
So I mean, so, so some of that, some of that time is gonna come back to us, right? And, and what it's gonna take and, and the committee. I think what I'm looking for now is, is do we support a moratorium as a planning commission?
I feel it's a great idea.
Is there an opportunity for public comment now that this is a discussion item or not?
No, this is a, we have a call to the public.
At the end.
At, at the end. You could, do you, do you wanna vote on this or just get a general feel? I think we.
I, I feel it's a great idea.
Need a vote.
So it says up to six months. Is that right? Is that what the wording is? Okay, 'cause I didn't really.
I think it.
It says six months.
It says six months.
Yeah.
So I, I'm in full support of it as well. But like you just said, six months, we've had ordinances here that we've gone five, six meetings. You know, so it's going to take time to hammer something out. It's gonna take time. We, we all know that. That's, we've done that.
I just don't want it to be shut down. I just wanna make sure if there's some flex there or whatever, 'cause I do see some, some.
I, 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 I agree. I agree with that too.
There's flexibility to go up to six months and even beyond that.
So does anyone on this panel not support the moratorium? That's all I need to know?
Okay.
Very good. Okay, moving on, um, business items. Old business, we have none to address. New business outside of this agenda, we have none to address. Which takes us to our last call to the public. You know?
Hi, Lauren, two thousand nine thirty. I just wanna state more of the purpose of the moratorium since we didn't have an opportunity to speak more to that during your discussion. The purpose is twofold. I think it's one, to build an ordinance for a data center since this is new and sweeping across the entire nation and we are not protected. The other is to have some independent analyses done. That could be anything from financial analysis. The other is to have some independent analyses done, that could be anything from financial analysis of how this could impact a township, to an independent aquifer study of how it's gonna impact the Marshall Aquifer. That alone, I've been told from, uh, the township board, could take twelve weeks. So asking for six months for a moratorium is actually incredibly a short amount of time to get all of that independent analysis and to write a really solid ordinance. It's not a long time, which I'm sure you all know how long it takes to develop those things. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then also, Sharon, I just wanna state, having a formal recommendation from all of you does make a big influence and is a big deal, because you all are appointed by the board. So any recommendations and decisions you make are very impactful. So that's why we were requesting a formal recommendation of that six month moratorium. It holds a lot of weight, and we know that, that's why we're here, that's why we're asking for that from you. So just wanted to clarify that.
Uh-oh.
Back. Chuck Smith, five one three six Fleming Road, twenty five hundred feet from the proposed site of the data center. Here's the scoop. There's also a piece of property directly across from the data center on Fleming Road. The guy's asking six point nine million dollars for it. Has any of that been brought to the board's attention? And what they wanna do to it, because it's my understanding that you denied what he wanted to have to do with it, and now he wants to sell it. If he's gonna sell it, three hundred and fifty-four acres is a wonderful spot for a data center that I don't wanna have there either, cause it's less than a half a mile away from my house. So I just thought I'd bring that up too. Yes, you guys don't even have to answer, but I want you to know, I'm gonna keep coming back, and that's gonna be one of the things, I need to know that. I don't want that, you know, it's like, okay, you get two days or whatever to find this out, folks, cause I won't be back. And I'll be on that website, now that I know it's there. I don't know squat about Facebook, but I'm learning fast, and there's close to, close to three thousand people now who don't want this, okay? And you think I'm not chasing my butter out trying to figure out, how do I get back to her? God, what was that, and how do you do this? So now I'm just cutting and pasting everything in this room. Everything. But again, going back to that three hundred and fifty-four acres, the first one that they wanna put on the data center is two hundred and fifty acres. That's three hundred and fifty acres. There's a lake there, there's a pond there, there's a water source there. I would suck that up in a heartbeat if I was these same guys. Don't let that happen either, please, thank you.
Just really quick, because I, for one, have not been bad meat to these meetings, but I really, from my heart, I thank you for your service, thank you for your time, thank you for listening to us. It can't be easy being on that side, we're all very, very passionate, we love our community, we don't wanna see it just be another, I don't even wanna say Detroit, but we don't want it to ruin. We all moved out here for somebody's had a little slice of heaven. So, again, thank you, I appreciate you guys taking the time and listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Rector, I just wanted to come up here, um, because I submitted a lot of interest to joining folks, um, on the board. Um, I live at seven one seven one Banner Lane, so I'm actually on the COFTA side of the township line, but I own an agricultural parcel in Hell Township, so, um, I do have property interests. But I'm an engineer by background, um, my, uh, for the last five years, I've been in government regulatory affairs, um, I'm a, for a, for a vehicle company. So I'm, uh, used to sitting on this side of the table, um, and my area of expertise is actually in, uh, air quality and emissions, um, which I think could potentially be helpful for you folks.
Absolutely.
Um, and I've also been through a couple of utility general rate cases and other things on the corporate side as well, um, so I'm familiar with infrastructure buildout and how those processes work. So I just wanted to come up there and say hello, and give you a face, um, and thank you. Um, I was, I was just with you for the last data center go around to three, three AM, so, thank you all, uh, for what you do on the planning mission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, all.
Cory, I can answer three five six in Los Tocos. Uh, just for clarification, the planning commission has to update the master plan every five years. They can request to update it more often, correct? Can you say that?
Correct.
So I'm going to urge this board to really look at our master plan. And trust me, if I'm up there, I have no problem doing the work. I've been behind there, I've done zoning work, I've done planning commission. We need to look at that, we need to have better master planning. It can be done. And then it gives you guys a lot easier job.
True.
Thank you.
Cory Altman, eight hundred Sleepford Road, um, the moratorium's obviously incredibly important. Thanks for bringing it up, Wayne, to your point, the waiver might be worthwhile considering to have it removed. Uh, my issue with the waiver is it is completely discretionary, the more I look at it on the board's opinion, not on hard facts and figures and determinations of environmental studies and real in-depth analysis that a developer would need to provide to the township board to be able to even consider proposing, well, not proposing, but moving through the moratorium. I don't really understand, and I'm not a determined, so I don't understand the language behind it, but why would you have a waiver that is completely discretionary on what somebody thinks? So that's just something to consider, something to think about. But the other thing that I want to bring up, when you talked about experts, um, there's a lot of us spending thirty, forty hours a week doing this, uh, data center stuff. We've amassed a small group of experts that come from high tech US bank, uh, economic development from Albuquerque, New Mexico. We have a wealth of resources to offer, people will just let us come to the table and support that. Um, and one of the things that I would like to see, we've talked about transparency a lot, people see it differently, how this has come to the public. From Albuquerque, New Mexico, that head of economic development said something of this magnitude, they would've reached out five miles in every direction, with mailers, multiple times, multiple board meetings, multiple town halls to get people engaged. I would ask that you guys support doing that now, because it's not too late. Every day, I meet people who still don't know about this in this township, every single day. I think that it would be a great effort of township board's position, the planning commission, to say, let's use the moratorium to go back to transparency, back to square one, to get people involved, to get people educated, to get people informed. What I would say is, is the right way to do it. So that is my big call action, you guys are to support that, because if people, because it's only changing coming history, we gotta talk about it, we gotta get people involved. So use the moratorium to do it.
Oh, I'm just gonna say this, because we've totally just gone off script here. But if that's your desire, then when you go on the twentieth, you say that to them, you say that on the twentieth. And I will say, what happened here tonight normally is not supposed to happen. You guys come and address us, and we're just supposed to sit here. But we've been very, you know, we wanna hear, we wanna respond, but when you go on Thursday, don't expect that, and don't be screaming out, here, they're not answering questions, cause that's not the way it works. So I would say to all of you guys, if you're gonna speak, be very succinct, um, stick with your points, and, and do it that way. Because, um, we've already vote, yeah, it'll, it might come back to us, I don't know what's gonna happen on the twentieth, but I'm just telling you, don't scream that they're not answering questions, they don't, they're not supposed to answer. We're not supposed to engage with you when you come before us, but tonight we did. So this, this is just.
Bless you.
Us. But I'm just saying on the twentieth, make your points, make them clear, and then, and then move on. So, um, that's just my advice to you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other participants, I'm gonna submit a motion to close, call to the public.
We have one?
No.
No, we don't need it.
I don't think so. That was the public hearing, we gotta close, and do twice.
Wayne, just tell me what you want. Just say what you want, Wayne, I'm, I'm, I'm there.
Item fourteen is adjournment, we have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
And support from. All in favor?
Aye.
Leading is adjourned.